Come back to order, please. Vice Chairman Fisher, could you leave us an invocation, please, sir?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this beautiful day that you have provided us, and we ask your blessing and care for all those that are suffering from natural disasters, from homelessness and addiction. We also pray for the men and women in our fire and rescue department, our sheriff's department, and the men and women serving in our armed forces, all of those who provide for our safety and protect our freedoms. Father, we ask that you be with us tonight in our deliberations and decisions that we make for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Vice Chair Yuen, could you leave us in the pledge, please?
Please stand face right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to its republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. I entertain a motion to add an item number five under county officials for motions regarding legal matters.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moving in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted as amended. The consent agenda, are there any proposed changes there?
No, sir.
How would the Board like to handle this one?
Approve or approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, sir, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is adopted as published. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board sets aside time for citizens to comment on agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing. Does anyone have anything at all they'd like to share? Anyone sign up?
No, sir.
No, thank you. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisors are done.
Very briefly, we're going to go through a budget process. So I will be holding a town hall meeting at Greenwood Elementary School on Saturday, October 11th, at 10 o'clock, for those who'd like to have a further discussion on budgets, on parks, or on other issues that are related to Frederick County. Thank you.
March 11th?
March 11th, this Saturday, March 11th, 10:00 a.m.
You said October.
Thank you.
You're planning way in advance.
This Saturday.
Anyone else? More comments, anyone? All right, we thank you. Presentation of resolution of appreciation for John Trenary. John, if you'd join us, we'd appreciate it. Resolution of appreciation for John S. Trenary, building official, Frederick County. Whereas John S. Trenary served as citizens of Frederick County, Virginia for approximately 34 years in the Department of Building Inspections, and whereas Mr. Trenary began his career in Frederick County, first as a plumbing inspector, too, 1982 to 1989, then serving as deputy director from 1989 to 1991, and finally rising to the level of building official, 1991 through 2016, and whereas through his leadership, the inspections department implemented an automated scheduling system to improve service to the building community, use of computer tablets to record and transmit fuel inspections, and improvements to the department's ability to scan record drawings. And whereas Mr. Trenary will be remembered for his leadership by example and dedication to duty, his diplomatic approach to problem solving, and willingness to work long hours to enable the inspections department to achieve its goals, and whereas Mr. Trenary was awarded the Jack Proctor Award for Meritorious Service from the Virginia Building Code Officials' Association, which is the highest honor that can be bestowed on a building official. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to John S. Trenary for his leadership and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of this public service. Adopted the 25th day of January, 2017. Thank you. And it'll take this thing a while to get there. Social Services Board, do we have anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I've put some feelers out, gotten no bites yet, but I'm still working on it, hope to have something soon.
Thank you, sir. Board of Building Appeals, I've not talked with Mr. Ruckman. No one has anything to report, we'll move on. Historic Resources Advisory Board is end of April, so we can come back to that one. Planning Commission, Opekin.
I don't have anyone.
Thank you, sir.
I will, I have one person who's given me the name and I'll have that through the next meeting.
Great, thank you, sir. Shawnee District, Planning Commission.
Not ready yet, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sanitation Authority, we're waiting for a comment back to ensure that Mr. Simon is willing to continue to serve, certainly hope that he is, he's done an outstanding job, so that'll bring us to the end of committee appointments. Public Works Committee Report.
The motion's item number five, sir.
I'm sorry, it is. It's not written in on my, not in on this one. Thank you, Supervisor Fisher. So item number five's, motions regarding legal action. Vice Chairman Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county attorney to file such court papers as may be necessary to accomplish the removal of masonry mailboxes from the right-of-way at 161 and 308 St. Andrews Court at the Back Creek Magisterial District, as the placement of such mailboxes currently prevents acceptance by VDOT of St. Andrews Court into the secondary street system.
So you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second, is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county attorney to file such court papers as may be necessary to accomplish the appointment of a successor executor to sell the property located at 2543 Martin Spurtpike in the Stonewall Magisterial District, as the current condition of the property is in violation of the county zoning ordinance and the record owner of the property is deceased.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Thank you, sir. That will bring us to the Public Works Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works met on Tuesday, February 28th, at 8:00 a.m., and the one item that the Board had asked the Public Works Committee to look at was disposition of the Shawnee Land Council House. Kind of pleased to report that the group wanting to restore the Clauser House and the Shawnee Land Advisory, Sanitary District Advisory Committee, were able to get together and reach an agreement. So what you have before you this evening is a copy of that lease agreement, which the Public Works Committee is going to recommend to the Board for acceptance, and what we need to do then is to send this to public hearing, so I would make the motion to send this to public hearing.
Motion to forward to public hearing.
Second.
Sir, second. Discussion, anyone? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Does that conclude your reports?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well done.
So that brings us to public hearing, rezoning 02-17. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is a rezoning application for .6 acres that is currently zone B2, Business General. This application seeks to zone that property to the B3, which is the Industrial Transition District, with proffers. Now, this applicant is seeking to rezone the site to the B3 district to accommodate the construction of an Express Oil and Tire Facility. Now, the site is located on the west side of Front Row Pike, which is Route 522 South, immediately south of the IHOP restaurant. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, the subject property is outlined in black. We have 522 along the frontage, you have the IHOP property here, and the Cracker Barrel behind the site. Now, this property is located within the sewer water service area and is within the limits of the Sensonie Eastern Frederick Area Plan. The comprehensive plan shows this property with a commercial land use designation, which is consistent with the current B2 zoning, as well as the requested B3 zoning. With this application, the applicant has offered a number of proffers. Those include a proffer to restrict a few uses, such as landscape services, warehousing, utilities, and trailer parking. They've limited new commercial access to the property to a write-in, write-out only on 522. They have proffered an interpartial connection with the IHOP property to facilitate access to the signalized intersection on 522. And they've also provided a monetary contribution of 10 cents per square foot to fire and rescue. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this application at their February 15th meeting, and tonight, following the public hearing, staff is seeking a decision from the Board on this rezoning request. I would be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Perkins? Yes, sir. Supervisor Lofton?
I noticed the VDOT's comments, and I concur. Where, can you go back to your map? Because it appears that where they're planning to put up the barriers to keep people from turning into their properties, kind of between the transition of left turn onto, I say, go to Costco, and then left turn going into Cracker Barrel property, where would the barriers be, and what kind of barriers would they be?
The type of barrier is going to be determined during the site plan, and it will be whatever VDOT states at that time it needs to be, whether it's continuation of the candlesticks currently with Costco, or an actual concrete physical barrier that will be installed concurrent with the development.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Anyone? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Evan Wyatt of Greenwood Engineering. Before I start into the discussion, I would like to take an opportunity to introduce the two gentlemen that are with me this evening, John Davis with Express Oil and Charles Thompson, who's the purchaser of the franchise. They have taken the time to join us and travel from Alabama to be here this evening, so should you have any questions about Express Oil, feel free, these gentlemen are more than happy to talk to you. The Express Oil franchise has started to move into Virginia. This will be the fifth store, although this is the first one actually in the valley and along the I-81 corridor, so we're very pleased that they've chosen our community to start their presence on the 81 corridor. To expand on a couple of comments from Candace's presentation with the 522 access, the property, of course, that we're talking about is here, this is the IHOP facility, this is the signalized intersection where you go back to Cracker Barrel. As part of the process to get the program ready for bringing it forward tonight, you noticed in the proffers that there is a proffer commitment for interpartial connectivity, and we have an agreement that is being circulated, it's actually a tri-party agreement because of this property owner, this property owner, and the tenant, so all three are signing the agreement. And what this is going to allow is interpartial connectivity in this location, as well as this location, also coupled with a shared write-in, write-out entrance on 522. Now, we've talked to VDOT about that, and they're amenable to this. There is going to be a requirement for an access management exception, spacing distance requirement, because the location of the entrance and the proximity of the signalized would not meet their normal spacing requirement. We're only off by about 20 feet, but nonetheless, we have to go through that process. And then for Mr. Lofton's question, as part of that discussion with VDOT, they have made it clear that in order to get the shared write-in, write-out access cut onto 522, there will be median barrier of some decision point to prohibit traffic, this traveling that wants to try to turn left into here. The interpartial access, of course, does allow for traffic coming through the site to then get to the signalized intersection and turn left to head towards Interstate 81. So the transportation piece, I think we've been fairly comprehensive in getting that resolved, and of course, the rezoning protects the county because it does require the interpartial connectivity. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, if there's other questions of the Board, I'll be happy to answer them, and once again, the gentleman with me tonight.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Wyatt, anyone? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to emphasize, Mr. Wyatt, the importance of that barrier that will be dealt with with VDOT, because across the street at Costco, the little rubber stanchions don't always hold up too well. The public seems to find a way around certain things, so hopefully the geometry and the working with VDOT will be a substantial structure that will keep that write-in and write-out, a write-in and a write-out.
I'm sure they'll be taking a hard look at it when we come in for our site plan.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Wyatt? Supervisors are done.
Mr. Wyatt, I was here two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, when the Planning Commission was hearing the same issue as the Board Liaison, so I wanted to thank the gentlemen that came then. I know they've made a long trip, but I wanted to let them know that we appreciate their being here, even though we're not asking you a lot of questions, their presence here counts, and I want them to know that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Other questions, Mr. Wyatt? All right, we thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we appreciate you being with us. If you'd like to add anything, we'd welcome your comments, if it's not necessary. Thank you. All right, this is the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed rezoning? Anyone? Anyone at all? Last call. All right, we'll close the public hearing, I believe this is Shawnee.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion for the approval of rezoning 02-17 for Express Oil Change and Tire Engineers.
Heard the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second, is there any discussion? Anyone? All right. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you. Other planning issues, Master Development Plan 0117, Freedom Manor. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here this evening with Master Development Plan 0117 for Freedom Manor, which is a proposal to develop 47 acres of land, zoned RP, or Residential Performance District, with 90 single-family detached clustered units and 100 townhome units, at a total site density of 5.47 units per acre. The properties are located east and adjacent to Paper Mill Road, and approximately 2,300 feet north and west of the existing signalized intersection with Front Row Pike, Route 522, and Paper Mill Road. Here's an overview of your site. The properties subject to this master development plan are highlighted in black. The properties were rezoned in 2015 with the approval of rezoning 1115 for Freedom Manor. This application was approved for the rezoning of 33 acres from RP District and 13.8 acres from the RA Rural Areas District to the RP District with proffers. The application enables the construction of up to 300 residential units. Access to the development will be provided via an intersection with Paper Mill Road and access through an interpartial connection to the northwest with the Madison Village Development. The transportation network also includes a 10-foot pedestrian trail along Paper Mill Road, internal public roads with sidewalks, and a trail that runs the length of the common boundary with Shenandoah Memorial Park. Here's the master development plan for the site. Here we have Paper Mill Road, and we have our internal site access along Davis Drive that connects with Madison Village. Along the common boundary with Shenandoah Memorial Park, we have our proffered trail network. On this portion of the site, we have our single-family detached clustered units, and here we have our townhome units. The master development plan for Freedom Manor appears to be consistent with the requirements of the Frederick County zoning ordinance, and this master development plan is in a form that is administratively approvable. This master development plan is also in conformance with the associated proffers for the approved rezoning 11-15. This master development plan is presented as an informational item only, and no action is required at this time. I'm available to answer questions, as is Mr. Patrick Sowers, who represents the applicant. Thank you.
Anyone have questions? Anyone? Thank you, sir. And now we're ready for Master Development Plan 0317.
Good evening again, and we are here with Master Development Plan 03-17 for Southern Hills Phase 2, and this is a proposal to develop 37 acres of land, zoned RP, or Residential Performance, with 130 single-family detached units. This master development plan also includes a 2.5-acre portion zoned B2, or General Business District, of right-of-way reservation for the future Collector Road, Warrior Drive Extended. This site is located east of Town Run Lane, approximately .6 miles south of the intersection of Town Run Lane and Fairfax Pike, Route 277. Here's an overview of the property. You can see it's split zoned between the RP and B2 districts, and Southern Hills Phase 1 is immediately to the south of the property. This property was rezoned in 2016 with the approval of rezoning 1116, Southern Hills Phase 2. This application revised the proffers for rezoning 16-06, Southern Hills, to allow for the construction of up to 130 single-family detached units. This proffer amendment changed the housing type mix for Southern Hills Phase 2 to include only single-family detached units and decreased the total number of units for the site by 102. The South Frederick Area Plan of the Comprehensive Plan identifies this property for residential and commercial land use designations. The current RP and B2 district zoning designations are supported by the Comprehensive Plan policies. Access to the site will be provided via an access drive from Town Run Lane, and it will connect with Southern Hills Phase 1 to the south via Westchester Drive. Sidewalks will be included on either side of internal streets for pedestrian connectivity within and throughout the development, and a 10-foot trail will be provided along Town Run Lane. Additionally, the site continues to preserve the Ewing Family Cemetery in the southeast corner of the property. The right-of-way for the new arterial, Southern Warrior Drive, is reserved as shown as part of the B2 portion, and it's a 100-foot reservation. Here is an overview of our site. We have the connection on Westchester Drive between Southern Hills Phase 1 and Phase The Ewing Family Cemetery continues to be preserved as is shown here, and here we have our 100-foot reservation for Warrior Drive Extended. This master development plan for Southern Hills Phase 2 appears to be consistent with the requirements of the Frederick County zoning ordinance, and this master development plan is in a form that is administratively approvable. This master development plan is also in conformance with the associated proffers with the approved rezoning 11-16. This master development plan is presented to you all this evening as an informational item only, and no action is required at this time. Mr. Evan Wyatt is representing the applicant here this evening. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Klein, anyone? Mr. Wyatt, anything you'd like to add? Thank you. All right. This one was informational only also? Very good. Any questions, anyone? Good. Things to the Board Liaison Reports, are there any? Seeing none, this is the portion of the meeting that we reserve for citizen comments on any issue at all. If you come forward, share your name, Magisterial District, try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Anyone have anything they'd like to share? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ruth Perrine, and I live in Shawnee Land, located in the Back Creek District. As co-chair of the Citizens Committee to Preserve the Clauser House and board member of the Clauser Foundation, a nonprofit organization created by the Citizens Committee, I'd like to express our gratitude to Mr. Williams and Mr. Downing for going all the way out to Shawnee Land to meet with the Shawnee Land Advisory Committee and our committee in order to provide assistance in reaching some common ground. We thank the Board of Supervisors for supporting the terms mutually agreed upon to save the historic Clauser House by moving the process forward to a public hearing and a final decision. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Johnson, I'm in Ms. Slaughter's district, the Stonewall District. And I had these comments prepared two weeks ago, but it will be self-explanatory why they didn't, were not read. You were too efficient, you got done too quick for me. My husband and I retired from our careers in Minnesota. After researching many mid-Atlantic states and cities, as well as visiting them over a period of three years, we chose to live in Winchester, in Frederick County, specifically in the Snowden Bridge Development. We relocated here five years ago. We have two grown and married sons who live in other states with our grandchildren. When we were raising our sons in Colorado and Minnesota, our son's quality education was our priority. Setting children up to succeed in life as good productive citizens is a parental responsibility. However, it also belongs to the community at large. Quality education is a big priority in our family. Our sons attended public schools, and we believe in them, and we fully support them then and now. Good quality education has a roll-up effect. Educated children grow up to be good quality citizens. Positive experiences yield positive results. Our development is rapidly growing with busy, young, and involved families, and what I have seen on our Snowden Bridge Gals website is, there's many more children to come. Daily, I see the full school buses transporting children to Stonewell Elementary, as well as their other designated schools. These children are added to the expanding population. It is very difficult, as I'm sure you can imagine, for a child to learn, concentrate, and be positive in a crowded environment. It is challenging and exhausting for teachers and staff. It is not conducive to learning. We recognize the Board has tremendous pressure and demands on limited resources, and I certainly witnessed that tonight as I sat through your budget meeting. I give you all honor and credit for having to go through that. It is a very, very difficult situation. My husband retired from city government, so we are extremely well acquainted with the demands. He was Director of Public Works for our suburb of the Twin Cities for 33 years. As senior citizens on fixed incomes, we are ready and willing to pay an increase in our taxes to support education. Delaying construction inevitably only leads to higher costs in the future. Placing Band-Aids on ever-increasing problems don't solve the problem. New office buildings and other buildings can wait, but children are learning and growing every day. They will learn what influences them the most. One thing is true, you can lose many things in life, your house, your car, your money, but you can't lose an education. I left a farewell party two weeks ago for close personal friends to come for that meeting. You were too efficient, and you got done before I got here, so my sincerest apologies for not making it then, but it was that- But it was that important to me then, and it's that important to me now, to give my support for this. This issue is a priority to us. Please proceed with the original timeline and budget to quickly move forward with our school projects. If you have any questions for me, please ask me, and I thank you for allowing comments and input to your decision-making.
My name is Allison Beahan. I'm in the Stonewall District. I want to thank you, Mary. Those were beautiful words and so true. Last time I was here, I spoke in regards to the Board not making any action. And I want to apologize because apparently, from the public's perspective, we don't see any action. From after speaking with some supervisors, you guys are working behind closed doors, so I want to apologize saying that you haven't made any action, but you need to bring it to the public so we can actually see that there is movement, there is action, there is discussion. We see nothing. We see that no action has been taken on any of these capital improvement plans, no public hearing has been set, nothing has been done for us to see. So we would really like some shared information, whether you're going to approve a specific dollar amount, and maybe not the whole thing, so that the school board can go back and make adjustments, do something. But just delaying it and delaying it, one is just increasing construction costs, and two is doing a disservice to the children of our community. And as you can see from the development plans that someone presented earlier, this community is just growing. I don't know if you guys don't see it, but it's growing, and there's nothing we can do to stop it. People are having more babies. It's not going to stop. We need to address it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Heisey. I live in the Nane District. It is crucial that we fully fund the school board budget. I'm requesting this decision as a Frederick County tax-paying homeowner, a parent, and a very concerned grandparent. I've owned property and paid taxes in this county since 1980. Both my sons are graduates of James Wood High School. Both are now gainfully employed and are still living in Frederick County. Last August, my oldest grandson entered full-day kindergarten, a program which my sons did not have available to them. Jaden is only five years old, but he's amazing to us with his recognition of words. He's using decoding skills which were previously taught in first grade. His class has a slightly, slightly lower student-teacher ratio than he would have had last year because an additional teacher was hired. Each child in his class now benefits from a little more teacher attention. He's ready to grab every learning opportunity that's offered to him. He's been exposed to musical instruments, art activities, exercises in PE, library books. All of these educational opportunities cost the county schools money. I have three more grandchildren who will be entering our schools within the next five years. Will we be prepared to educate our youngest children as they move through our schools? As a homeowner, I'm an important part of paying for our school system, which provides an education for over 13,000 students each year. The education provided through our elementary, middle, and high schools prepares our students to be responsible adults. Please think of each one of these 13,000 students as you consider the school budget for the next year. Every year, there's a new class of kindergarten students eagerly entering our schools, as well as a class of students preparing to graduate and to move on towards adulthood. Each student is important. Our children are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Amy Hall. My husband Jim and I live in the Shawnee District with our daughter Rebecca, who is a junior at Sherrando High School. Jim and I are originally from the Greater Pittsburgh area, and we've been living in the Winchester-Stevens City area for approximately 22 years. We love the life that we've made for ourselves and for our family in this community. Four years ago, we made the decision to put our Winchester City Home on the market so that we could purchase a home in the Shawnee District in order for our daughter to attend Sherrando High School. Over the course of the past three and a half years, we have monitored our daughter's educational and social development. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about her. At age 15, she traveled to Europe with three Sherrando High School staff members and learned about the cultures of Switzerland, Italy, France, and Spain. By age 16, she had developed writing, reading, math, and science skills that allowed her to apply and be selected as one of 40 female students to attend the statewide summer residential governor's school for math, science, and technology at Lynch Bar College. For the past three and a half years, she has been an active member with the color guard with the Sherrando Band and the guard captain for the last eight months. By next spring, she anticipates earning her associate's degree in science from Lord Fairfax Community College prior to her June graduation, with the intent to double-major in both physics and mathematics. She is thriving. We are very proud of her. Yet, this would not have been possible if it were not for the teachers and the administrators at Sherrando High School. So I'd like to share with you a few other things about Rebecca and her experience. 167. 167, that's the number of students that were on the roster last year with her English teacher for Grade 10. I know that my daughter did numerous essays and projects, so I did the math. If that teacher spent merely three minutes on one assignment for 167 students to read and to provide feedback to them in order to help them become better writers, that would require 501 minutes. When I divided that, that's 8.35 hours for one assignment. 12. 12, that's the number of students whose backs faced the Board during instruction last year in her honors chemistry class due to the classroom design and the high enrollment in the class. Zero. Zero, that's the amount of money that I offered her chemistry teacher this year, because she's an AP Chemistry, to help tutor her. She said, "No." I said, "Why?" She said, "Because that's her job, to make sure that the students understand." These teachers work hard within the boundaries of their jobs every day. They do it because it's their vocation. They do it because they know that every student who comes through their classroom door is important and valuable. And my husband and I are blessed because our daughter is being given the tools for future success. However, I do not understand how it is that in our community that we're able to encourage industrial and economic growth and celebrate our local tourism while our teachers and our schools are being pushed to the extremes. Sherrando is overcrowded. The classes are huge. The teachers are working long hours. And yet, we question whether we should build another high school? We needed that fourth high school years ago. New businesses are moving into Frederick County. The hospital is growing. Housing communities are popping up like dandelions on a warm March day. Growth is occurring. We need to plan for the future. We need to invest in the capital projects requested by the Frederick County School Board. And we need to compensate our teachers, our employees, and we need to keep them in our division. The decisions that we make are going to affect our future and our children's, so please consider them. We need the funding to build the schools and to give the teachers the raise that they deserve. We are at the crossroads, and your decisions and your actions in the coming days will determine the future well-being of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll try. I'll tell you straight up. I tend to get a little emotional.
Okay.
My name is Nina Coke. I am a resident of the Shawnee District. 16 years ago, my family moved to Frederick County. Public education was the priority in choosing Frederick County over the surrounding areas. The cost of living here, the real estate, the taxes was so much lower than what we were accustomed to, we didn't even factor it in. I did my research online as much as I could. It was, you know, 2001. I read newspaper articles. I looked up percentages of pass rates and standardized testing. I checked graduation percentages. I followed every lead that would provide me with information to make the best choice for my children's education. When we visited the area, we went to the administrative offices for Frederick County Public Schools and several schools. Armed with my information, we asked all the right questions: class size, teacher-student ratio, expected growth, and anything we could think of that would help us to make an informed decision for our children's education. I'm not alone in prioritizing that for any kind of a relocation. Other people do it, we've heard that. Other people will continue to do it. Information available today, due in large part to the reduction of financial support for all public services by Frederick County, would likely lead me to make a different choice. I may choose to settle in one of the neighboring localities if I were still moving here due to my husband's job. My children have all graduated. My youngest, just this past June, he is at the top of his class in nuclear school in Goose Creek, South Carolina for the Navy. My daughter will graduate in May with a degree in sports medicine from Radford University. She plans to pursue a doctorate for occupational therapy. However, now this is the part that I've been leading up to. My oldest child is the proof in the pudding. My oldest child is special needs. We have struggled throughout his education with completing schoolwork, with homework, with social skills, with emotional outbursts, and with disciplinary issues. In his sophomore year, he was identified with characteristics of Asperger's Syndrome. In his senior year, his father was diagnosed with Myelodysplastic Syndrome, it's a group of cancers of the blood and bone marrow. His pursuit of his graduation paled in comparison to what we were facing. Student support services, special services, Frederick County Public Schools administrators and staff supported him and saw him through to his graduation in June of 2009. His father's doctors allowed us to postpone his stem cell transplant so he could be present to see his son graduate. His son with special needs that had struggled from preschool graduated from Sherrando High School. That was an accomplishment that was due to the support and the input of Frederick County Public Schools staff. They not only educate our children, but they provide emotional support, social role modeling, direction, and whatever is necessary to achieve the success of our students. Our future, make no mistake, Frederick County Public Schools are successful. When my children complete their educational children journey, they will have degrees and skills that they can take and practice anywhere. Whether they return to Frederick County will be determined in large part by the public services that are available here that enhance their lives and supports their children and their education. These things are dependent on your support of budget requests that allow our public services to meet our community needs and accommodate growth. Our future is in your hands. Please, please consider the ramifications of approval of a county budget that forces our school and public services to do more with less again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's all right. Thank you. Well done. Anyone else? Anyone at all?
Good evening. My name is Joy Kirk, and I'm standing before you tonight as an individual. I am a resident of the Back Creek District. I've lived in Frederick County for 22 years, and during that time, I have been employed by Frederick County Public Schools. But tonight, I'm not here to tell you my story. Each year, I come and I continue the story of my beautiful bonus daughters. My bonus daughters, also known as stepdaughters, are graduates of James Wood High School. My oldest graduated from James Wood High School in 2006. This June, my husband and I proudly traveled to California to watch her receive her RN degree. She is now working as an ICU nurse in Palm Springs Desert Hospital and pursuing an MBA. My next daughter, Cassie, graduated from James Wood High School in 2009. She attended Shepherd University, received her health promotion and exercise science degree. After much thought, she realized that wasn't the degree she wanted. She's now enrolled at Shenandoah University. She will be a secondary social studies teacher, and I'm proud of that decision. My youngest, Sarah, graduated in 2011, attended Shepherd University, and received a bachelor in fine arts, despite her parents' worry about what she would do with it. She had those same realizations. She's now enrolled herself at Shenandoah University and is pursuing a degree in environmental science to use in collaboration with her photography degree. What I want you to know is, my students, my girls, they weren't in the gifted program. They were not AP students. They weren't in dual enrollment. These were good kids, whose parents had to do a little prodding, whose parent had to do a little encouraging. But fortunately, we had a good school system that helped build a strong foundation. We need to celebrate what we are doing. We need to recognize the quality of education we are providing in our schools and the hours of work the faculty and staff are putting in. We also have great community services. Our public servants work hard to make sure that we feel safe and protected, that when we need an ambulance or a fire truck. I've heard so many stories from my colleagues over 22 years, not just about the schools. I lived that story. That is my story. But about everything this county and community can provide. I would love to encourage my daughters to settle here. I chose to move here from the Greater Pittsburgh area as well. I want my daughters to have that choice. I want them to consider this as a place where they would want to raise their families. But to do so, we need to make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone at all? We thank you for your comments, and we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Brings us to Board of Supervisors comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate the cooperation of the Klauser Foundation that was formed by a group of citizens and the Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee sitting down and working things out face-to-face. It took some time, but they did it. It was not easy. I just want to compliment both those organizations for sticking to it and working at an agreement. And again, thanks to our attorney and their attorney for getting all that put into paper, and they just did an outstanding job.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank all the speakers that were here tonight. And one lady that got up and said she wanted to apologize last time. I know that I spoke and said they spend countless hours, the Board does, behind their own doors, at their own houses, and having coffee and trying to figure out all these tough decisions. And they do. They spend countless, countless hours doing that, and they give to the community. But we also have other people out there in this audience that do that. The sheriff sitting back there with his folks, the teachers that are here, they spend countless hours over and above what they get paid for. I don't know that there's a salary that will come close to really compensating them for what they do. I spent some time with social services last week and found out that a lot of our officers spend many time with some of our senior citizens, helping them with medications and visiting and making sure they're okay. That's not in their work job description, but it's done. It's not in the teacher's job description. It's not in the teacher's job description to do all that they do. It's much appreciated. It does need to be compensated at some point in time. And I also looked up and saw our subdivisions, and subdivisions are people, and we've heard many comments about, you know, if you want to not have more schools and you don't have more subdivisions. That's not who I am, but I think that we can grow the county and be aggressive and progressive, but we have to prepare for that. And so hopefully, we'll do that. I'm in favor of that, and I've heard a lot of good comments about that, so we'll go from there and see what we do. But I do appreciate everybody who spoke tonight. I wanted to compliment everybody else on their volunteer hours, if you will, that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Well, if you would, I'd like to draw your attention to the framed art on the far-right kiosk. In his January nineteen forty-one address to Congress, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt articulated his vision for a post-war world founded on four basic human freedoms: freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom from want, and freedom from fear. In nineteen forty-two, Norman Rockwell began the Four Freedoms series. The paintings were a phenomenal success, and today they provide us not only with a look back, but a look forward. This one is Freedom of Speech. It was donated to Frederick County by Helen Michael Lake, and it's much appreciated, will I'm sure give enjoyment and inspiration to many as we move forward. So I'd encourage you and invite you to come and observe. There's some very insightful words that accompany the artwork, so please enjoy. We haven't found and decided on a permanent home for it yet, but it's much appreciated, and we certainly thank the Lake family for its donation. Anyone have anything else? Vice Chairman Fisher.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.